I think what's special about the presence of the parents was like a mommy.
It really was. It went really well this year, so I want to thank the board for that and I'm glad that it went well for the staff as well. Anyway, we're back to business. I hope school started well. It seems like it has. Agendas are here. Stephen, you have, is this a filed for?
Well, that's something that you may decide whether people need a copy or want a copy.
It's not on the agenda, so that's something that we...
Yeah, it's just information. It hasn't to do with our due for...
Okay, so is this something that we need to have a conversation about?
No.
I'm asking whether I need to put it on the agenda or just hand it out for information?
No, just hand out for information.
Oh, alright. I'll take a copy and I'll hand some in which direction. This is just an FYI that's sitting in front of me, so. So our dues for membership of the SBA. Okay. Members of the public. We have members of the public here, and in fact, sorry, this room, I'm still trying to adjust to the new configuration. Usually you people are all out in front of us, so I apologize for looking around. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is a time for you to have any say, if you'd like to say something. If there's something that's on the agenda you want to speak to, you can wait till that point on the agenda or whatever. It's up to you. I don't know what you're here for. And I also don't know who you are, so I hope... Howard, did you do a sign up?
I did.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
So introduce yourselves. I know some of you, of course, but...
Well, I'm Tom Walters, and I did want to introduce myself. I'm a new member here.
Oh, wonderful.
Wanted to thank you and say hello, and I teach in the music department.
Music, I recognize the name. Great, nice to meet you.
I'm Ron Kelly. I know you both.
All of you, huh? So.
I'm Sandy Dunn. I have a middle school student and a high school student, and I'm here to hear what Howard has to say about the music department.
Great, okay, thank you. That's on the agenda. Good, welcome.
Hi, I'm Kim Saul and Zoe Saul. We're here to support the music.
Music? Okay, great.
Jen Connor, project director for 2012.
Thanks, Jen. Glad you're here. Okay. Is that on here? Is there something you want, or is there something you... Nope. Okay. Moving on, correspondence. I have a couple of emails that I received from David Dezentor. I don't think anyone else...
He's already been here and cut him business done.
Oh, okay, so he isn't coming tonight. So I'll just mention them. I wanted to get them, get it in the minutes. He sent a couple of emails over two separate issues. The first one was during the summer. It was in August. And it was about some concern. Let me back up for a second. David, David Dezentor is the emergency management coordinator, I think is what his title is, for the town of Townsend. He's also on the select board in the town of Townsend. Most of you remember him from being on the school board in Townsend. He's no longer on the school board, but there was a letter that came to us over a concern about some drainage issue that happened with a parent, I mean, a community member. Honestly, I think Frank, wasn't this, this one, somebody told me it was all straightened out.
Yeah, it was understanding about a dog who got ill and...
Okay, that was what it was. A dog that was ill. And that one turned out to be nothing. So that was earlier on. And then the second one is an issue over when Tropical Storm Irene came through, the Millbrook, which runs through our property here, had quite a bit of debris built up in it. And the town of Townsend has secured a grant, which is wonderful that they've done that, and it's to remove some of this debris so that if we ever have high water again, we won't have flooding in our fields or wherever else in the town. And so David has been the coordinator between the town of Townsend and Leland and Gray. He was, he sent a couple of emails about that just to make sure that we were aware of this and because on our property and that we had to sign, because it's a FEMA federal grant, we had to sign a release so that they can come onto the property. And they're working through the administration. I advise him to go to the administration, which he has done. And the administration has signed the document that needed to be signed, and he's working with Ed, I believe, Ed McGrath, who's our...
Yeah, he's going to be contacting Ed this next weekend.
And, and working to remove the debris out of the...
Yeah, and we're concerned about the access.
Right.
We want to make sure that the equipment that accesses the stream doesn't mess up our fields, stays off of Leach Field. And so there's a plot, which I reviewed with David before this meeting, and explained which parts of the bank were going to be done. And I think it's all fine, so he just needs to be clear with Ed McGrath about when that's going to start. The work has to be completed by the end of October, so this isn't, you know, this is going to happen pretty quickly. And there's a potential of working on two separate parts of the bank that adjoin our property. Also, the adjoining property, we just have to agree, which I'm sure they will. So that's, that's it. He was eager to come and speak to the board if he needed, but Emily and I consulted and felt that we should just take care of this and move on.
I don't know if anybody has any questions or concerns about it. So I'm pretty straightforward. I'm thrilled that this is going to happen. We thanked the town of Townsend and David for doing that, going through this process. So anyway, that was correspondence. I had one other, I have a letter that came to us from a former staff member, and it's a personnel issue, so I brought it just to give to you. It's not something that we would read at a meeting, and so I'm handing it to the superintendent. I also have, Frank, this is something that I think I got from you. It was in my correspondence pile, and actually, it doesn't belong to me. And it's, it's the New Fane School District, so I'll just pass this down. It's from Sullivan Powers, and it just somehow got to me. And instead, I know there's probably one for us too somewhere, but that one happens to be the New Fane School District one, so if you just pass that one on to New Fane. And that was it. That I had. Does anybody else have any correspondence? I did not check the box upstairs.
There was nothing on there.
Oh, okay, thank you for checking. Alright. So if that's it, and nobody has any questions, we'll move on to administrative reports. Okay, so principal. You've sent quite a bit.
Been two months, and it's the start of the school year, and personally, luckily, the, I had a subenthusiast to you before we met with our improvement plan coordinator from the Department of Education, so I couldn't add any more to that because I just have it on Friday. And I mean, it's, there's nothing I feel I need to review in detail, except for the attachments that I sent. And so I, I, I think I sent them to you because I'm so proud of the work that we have done. So for example, one of the attachments was, it looks like this, and it's about where, where and when the writing genres, there are six of them, are taught and where taught and assessed or just assessed. And this piece of work is the result of a database that we created of all of our course syllabos, so about eighty-eight different courses we offer. The teachers entered that information, only took fifteen minutes, of course, in June. And from this information, Linda Root, our literacy coach, and I were able to analyze redundancies and gaps and, and, and address them. So at one of our in-service days, we were able to distribute this, and departments met together to review this and be able to see what am, what am I responsible for doing? And for some, it was a great relief, and for others, it was more than they had realized. But Linda and I are continuing to support the individual teachers and the departments to be able to do this the best it can be done. And it's a process, because in some areas, they hadn't necessarily taught or gave an assessment, or say, a, a, a writing assessment, and I'll just pick anything, in ninth grade, high, high school PE. And I should mention that in that column where it says ninth grade assess only, anyone who has it up, it lists a bunch of high school courses together because we don't know if you take them in ninth grade or tenth grade, like art or music, and sometimes you take it multiple years, so that was one of the documents that I showed our improvement plan coordinator from the Department of Ed to demonstrate that, yes, we have a, a need to address reading and writing in our school, and this is one way. Any questions about this?
No, but really, congratulations for tackling it. This is really good work.
Yes, I'm sure the consultant was completely blown away. I told him afterward privately, I said, "Do you understand? This is a really very, you know, driven principal we got here."
But this was a great need, and so this is a starting point that should reveal some good results down the road.
And I think Root already is. We, our ninth graders coming, coming into the high school, this is their second year of, basically their third year entry that we have done the literacy across the curriculum. And they actually started the spring of the first year I, I got here, so they have become very accustomed to the tools. The next step with this is having benchmark assessments. So there would be one or two essays per year that would then be saved, and a student would have a portfolio to, that we would be looking at so we could determine, not just for the individual student, but school-wide, where do we need to perhaps teach more procedure writing or teach more response to text, which is a little about citations. So, and analysis. The other document, any other thoughts on that, writing genres? The other, the next document is very similar in format about our strategic instruction model from the University of Kansas, where we did about fifteen months of training in. There are more tools besides the ones lefted, listed in the left columns, about nine of them that we have learned. But there are others that exist, but we're not going to learn any more of these tools until we have this integrated school-wide. So similarly, it shows the, the tool, like the paragraph writing strategy is listed first, and then who's teaching assessing and who's just assessing. Any questions about this? And the last document, which I'm pretty sure I sent you, was about professional development. Did you guys get that one?
Yes.
Okay. So I would say that is also very important progress for us to, to understand where the respective departments are, what work is in front of them, what they've, of course, what they've accomplished already. Because they're now in different places. What the science department needs or the music department needs is different from what the English department needs. And now that we have a baseline of the writing genres and the SIM strategies, we can, we can then see what is it that we need to work on. Plus, there are some other initiatives in this as well as, including assessing the expectations of student learning, which is like on page three of the student handbook, and having a real system for doing so, which could result in assessing them, reporting them, and then making database decisions. Until now, we really haven't been able to make database decision, decisions on curriculum instruction assessment. So that's, I couldn't help but send it to you. I mean, it was a summer's worth of, of work, and it could never have happened without the literacy coach. So thanks for continuing to support that position. And I think that's about it.
Well, there was one more that you sent.
We'll, we'll talk about music data a little bit later. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't, it's sort of been, we've been talking about it for a few meetings, and I said, "We got to look at data together." So that's, that's what we'll do.
Listening to beginning of the school year, do you have enrollment numbers of students?
We have three hundred and sixty-five students.
And middle school, high school, do you have any?
We have fifty-four students in grade seven, about sixty-five students in grade eight. And the rest is high school.
And I'm amazed you have these numbers. Do you have other districts?
About a quarter of them. And of our, oh, from, tell me what you mean. By your by school choice or?
Yes.
So like being from a choice town like Dover, or so about twenty-five percent, probably twenty-five percent. And I think, I don't remember if I shared this with the board, but the faculty and the administration, on one of the last days of school, did an analysis of our population, say, comparison, Leland and Gray ten years ago to Leland and Gray today. So they could see our changing demographics, because we do have a significantly higher percentage of students eligible for free and reduced meals. That has a lot to do with, of course, the national economy. We went up six percentage points in one year. At the same time, where are students coming from? So like ten years ago, we had zero students from Athens and Grafton. This year, we have fifteen. Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's a boy. Yeah, I think it might even be, yeah, that's, we have, we had a hundred and forty students from New Fane ten years ago. Now we have a hundred and four. We have, and, and we, and so not only do we look at the actual numbers, but we look at the percentages. So the, obviously, the percentage of enrollment is changing, that it's gone down significantly from Dover and New Fane. And for Athens and Grafton, of course, it's a huge difference because there was nothing before, and an increase in percentage from Jamaica. So the actual number of, you know, the, the number of students and how it's changed our population in Jamaica has about a sixty percent free and reduced meals rate at the school compared to Dover, which is about half of that. So that's, also has an impact on, certainly on us. You'll notice that in the music enrollment data, I had included eligibility for free reduced meals and learning plans because it's part of the change in demographics. So who do we represent, so, you know, who's represented in what, which programs? So I pay very close attention to, and I'm talking a long time, but enrollment advanced placement courses, level-one courses, physics and chemistry and earth science, to see that it's representative of our school population.
So Durin, the, when you, when you speak about most of the ones, you mentioned Jamaica and New Fane, the others are tuition towns. But I'm interested in the Jamaica and New Fane thing. So the, the decline in numbers in New Fane, does that reflect the decline in the elementary schools, or are we losing children to other schools or homeschooling across? I don't mean just New Fane. You mentioned New Fane as a decline in percentage. So is that, is that just a reflection of less students in New Fane and more in Jamaica, or do you know that? If you don't know the answer, that's fine. I would be shocked if you did know.
It was, it was, it was easy to look at the demographics compared to ten years ago. It is much harder to look at why students are leaving or if they had never arrived from years ago. So another thing that we looked at as a faculty is the list of, of students who came to Leland and Gray and then chose to go somewhere else, and what towns they were from and where they decided to go to. And so we, but this, this past school year was then the baseline data. So I can't really go back and say, "What were students not coming for or leaving from, from New Fane or Dover compared?" Because it's just the beginning. But we are able to see, in a sense, where our competition is.
I'll just point out to board, one of the administrative responsibilities is the forty-day report, so-called, the October tenth report of the enrollment, of attendance, average daily membership. Actually, average daily membership comes up at the end of the year after they figure out how many, how many times it shows absent and so forth. But one thing critical about this choice issue is that since the legislature has opened the gates to greater degree of choice at the high school level, we can expect, we can hope that there'll be more students choosing to attend Leland and Gray. We're no longer barred from admitting them due to a regional agreement with the other high schools. On the other hand, we have to be very careful that, that where, where, where they live should still claim the ADM, the state student-based grant, even though we're teaching the school, the, the student. The town in which they live receives the state-based grant for educating at the high school level. In other words, the money doesn't follow the chart, and it hasn't in the past, so, you know, this is not new. But I do think that I will become much more aware of students that are, as you asked, leaving our, well, the, the Union School District, to go elsewhere, because we will be claiming them on our roles, I mean, on our, on our reporting role for state, state funding, even though they're attending someplace else. And that's going to have to be a pretty honest and collegial relationship among the superintendents to make sure that that's the case, at least in the public sector. We don't really have any control over, or, or any way of monitoring, except by rumor, who goes to a private school, you know, who withdraws school to a private school.
Or homeschool. I don't know.
Now, homeschool, we do have reports. I do, I do receive the reports of all the people who are legitimately enrolled in home study. A further complication or adventure there this year for Leland and Gray will be that we're now aware that we can report home study students, the extent to which they use services at the school. For example, if they take one course out of four, that probably is worth a point-two-five FTE. And if it's going for the year, if it's a semester, it'd be half of that. But anyway, we're supposed to claim all those little shares of people, FTEs now, and be able to be reimbursed to them. This is not really a change. This supposedly was in effect, I think during, correct me wrong, back to two thousand or something.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight. And, but as far as I'm concerned, at least while I was here in the middle school, it never was an issue that we reported or felt that there was sufficient reason to report on it in terms of the money. And I was never informed as a principal, nor as a superintendent, till Durin discovered this via other means. So anyway, that's, that's the latest on that. Also, we get credit for your Twenty-First Century Grant activities. It's all home study students participate in the sports and after-school activities. That's also worth some, some minimal credit on our average daily membership. Questions?
I, I did want to mention that when I was thinking about fifteen students from Athens and Grafton, I was like, "That's funny." Because with the change in the school choice guide, we had this year fifteen students who are not from choice towns, but are coming here for school choice. If they were here from school choice towns, we'd get whatever it is, twelve or thirteen thousand dollars per student.
Eight thousand, eight hundred fifty.
Is it that much? Is it that much? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm way off then.
What's our, what's our reimbursement on the, I mean, our state funding for high school students? Isn't it eighty-eight?
There is no grant. There is no, there, there is no, you know, grant per student. There is a, there's a tax rate calculation that's based off about five derivative numbers, and one of them is the number you're saying.
Eighty-eight fifty-six.
Yep. But none, none of that follows.
It's not money that actually comes to us.
Before the new guide from the commissioner, we were limited to ten students. We made an exception this past year for eleven.
And I got permission from my neighbor superintendent to do that.
And this year, now in this current school year, we have fifteen. And, but of course, none, no funding follows. That's a whole class size, you know, like a whole biology classroom in the class. So it has, you know, an impact on our resources, but of course, we're happy to have them. And for the, from the teacher's point of view, it's indistinguishable what town this student was from.
Oh, I did want to mention that this information is probably good to keep in mind as, as you're, as you're considering the proposal from the administration regarding funding of a budget, budgeting. Because after all, we're trying to have an inquiry cycle here where we make changes, see how that affects student enrollment and performance, and then decide on how to reinvest or how to change our investments within the budget.
And we know that's coming very soon. Budget. Okay, so is there anything else?
Could you define equitable access to excellence? I just didn't quite understand what that meant.
That specifically refers to all students being able to take high-level courses, grade-level or honors track courses. So that if, so the, so the differentiated instruction workshop was how do you teach students at high academic levels, you know, based on, say, the Vermont standards or the Common Course standards, when students don't necessarily come with the skills to perform at that level? So that's what that's about.
In a mixed classroom, a classroom of mixed levels?
Right, that's right. So, yeah, in a heterogeneous classroom. So how do you get them all to learn at high levels? And so the process is through differentiating instruction, not to make it easier for some students, but to teach using a diversity of instructional methods. So you might be, the teacher might be teaching the content, the same content, in three different ways. So that's what that's about.
Great question. Okay, any other questions? That was specifically your Durin's report. No? We'll move on to, Stephen, in your, you, Stephen did send his opening day remarks. Thank you for sending those.
Yeah, I, actually, I am giving all the boards a bad news this month. I'm not really going to send a superintendent's report, or at least try to refocus my efforts so that I'm not duplicating things or, well, anyway, you have to tell me what you'll miss, you know, after a couple of months. So give me that feedback. But I, I know that I spend a lot of time trying to tailor individual reports to each board, and I will continue to do so focusing on policy. That really is the primary, month-to-month issue that I should raise before the board, and that isn't something that typically the principal would do. When we're talking about student learning, we should be focused on our action plan and the indicators that Durin provides. I don't need to muddy the waters there. But I did want to point out in my opening remarks that I, I made some, some summary data that was based upon the principle of growth. If you didn't read it, just to reiterate for the public, the Vermont State applied for a waiver from No Child Left Behind based on the principle that we would, the concept that we would have an indicator of growth for a student in the third grade and then see how they improve in the fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, taking them on up, watching the same student, not bunching a whole bunch of third graders together and comparing them with next year's third graders, which is what the Kneecap data does now. So we analyzed the data in-house. Frank, Matt Martin, and some principals collaborated, contributed to getting a huge data dump on the Kneecap scores in math. We were able to show how many kids improved, stayed the same, which means growth, because if you stay the same, you're proficient in third grade and proficient in the sixth grade. Obviously, you got better. I mean, that's progress. But also showed what students, which individuals, what numbers of individual students actually decreased in performance over that time. That's the canaries in the mine shaft and the alarm bells that we need to be focusing our attention on. So anyway, that, that's why that information was pertinent on the opening day, and it is a summary of the whole SU. We had two four-year comparisons, third through sixth and fifth through eighth grades. And then in Fontis and Penel, that's primarily an effort in the, well, is an effort of the middle, of the elementary schools. We compared two years of data because the teachers have been using it for two years, for one year, and that was very encouraging. So, you know, part of my responsibility is to rally the troops and make sure we're heading in the right direction. And if we are getting some results, then we need to stick with it. And if we're not getting the results in math, I particularly wanted to call attention because we are now offering a math instruction course, how to teach math, not about math, but how to teach math, like Dr. Mahesh Sharma, who worked with Ward's Row last year very effectively, and now is working with all of the elementary schools, as well as Leland and Gray Middle School and High School. I'm actually taking that course. It's an exciting course, six days, and I wish I had it thirty years ago, but, you know, I'm kind of a math guy, so I'm having fun with that. So get back to my report. Otherwise, I would report on a monthly basis changes in staffing. Otherwise, I would report on a monthly basis changes in staffing. And we are actually, we did advertise for an accountant. Dana Lad did a tender resignation in Frank's department. And so we are interviewing candidates later this week. And keep informed as we make a decision. And then the other thing that I will report when it's appropriate is having to do with finance. But generally, in this meeting, Frank carries the ball with the financial reporter. So that's it, questions, I think? Let's see, I passed out some things. I have my code of ethics, in case you want to hold me, you know, you have a code of ethics and so does the superintendent. So I call that to your attention. And let's see, was there something else? I passed out a lovely book, right? This little viral deal. If you're on the board last year, you got one as well. This is an annual publication by your Vermont School Boards Association. And you are paying dues, so you're not getting this as a result of your dues, unfortunately. There's an additional fee for this. But we did purchase one for all board members. And it is a resource book for you when you are struggling with some decision or wondering what was, what your role is and what your responsibilities may be, how to proceed on asking questions, like exploring something. I think this book will be a great resource for you, so.
Did, am I, they got this one last year? Is that what they got?
Well, somebody said they got a copy. In common with the class, you got a copy.
I, yeah, if you took the workshop, you get one as part of the workshop. I did get one through the workshop. I got one from, it was just getting through the board. But I think this is a new one from, we used to have one that was called the Resource Directory, and it was founded a different way. I think this is brand new, and it's really quite informative. I think you'll like the layout, I think you'll like, use it as a resource, ask questions. Honestly, have issues around it, or questions about it. It should be really helpful to you in your role as school board member.
It's been well received by other boards. And be free to share your feedback on it regarding the contents and give helpful comments back to your executive director, Stephen Dale. The only other thing I think I'll mention, Emily, is that if you attended the retreat and you want to be reimbursed, certainly if you paid, you should try to send that little note, that receipt that you got from Allison. If you don't have it, we'll make it up again. But I want to make sure that board members are covered on that retreat meal. And thank you for your attention.
Okay. I'll go to the board.
Yeah, you better paste it on my head.
I was like, I didn't get that.
That's right. Yeah. I certainly welcome your questions in the future on that code of ethics or any other matter. And let me know what you're missing from the reporting system.
So the fact that we won't be having a written report is what you're telling us?
Well, that's, it'll probably focus on policy or on an issue. I know that one other board has already given me the feedback that they missed having, they don't have an agenda with the future meetings on it, that their board. And they're missing getting that from me, so I may have to be doing something like that on a, you know, board meeting basis. But that's really not, that can be accomplished, I think, more easily. Just to keep in mind, one of the efforts here is for me to reduce the amount of hours that I'm putting in things that are not essential and try to focus more on the actual supervision valuation of the work in the schools and the principals. So that's, it is, it is an eight, you know, eight to ten-hour weekly adventure for me to produce the papers that I've been producing before.
And I'm in, you know, total agreement with you on that. I know you've spent a huge amount of time doing that. I know that board members appreciate that across the SU, and I totally respect your decision about it. I just wanted to mention that I think that one of the things that is critical, and I don't mean this just for Leland and Gray, because I actually think we're fairly well-connected to the SU level here at Leland and Gray, maybe even more so than other schools. But I hope that with the absence of your written report, that there will be that focused attention to what we're doing at the SU level.
That's the bigger picture.
Because it is very easy for us to operate in isolation of each other, and it's critical that we don't do that. And for us at Leland and Gray, we all know how important that is because all those elementary schools are feeding, or many of those, most of those elementary schools are feeding their students right into here at Leland and Gray. So for us, K-12 education is critical. It may not seem quite so critical if you're sitting at a K-6 school or, as Marvel is called, K-8. So that will be the only thing I would suggest, that we make sure that that connection is still happening between schools and between schools and the SU.
Well, I'll be listening. We'll see what, you know, what evolves. But do share your comments through your board chair or directly with me if you wish.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Stephen?
School's not a good start. I was in every single classroom except Leland and Gray. I think you were in every classroom, but it was fun to see all the kids. Fun to see all the kids on the first day. Grounds were very well-kept in most first schools. And compared to other places I've visited here this fall, it's very impressive how people are caring for the buildings.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, Frank, I see you're handing out reports.
Yeah. So I have a financial report. It's a little different format. I'll spend just a little time talking about the transition to the financial system, new financial system. While that document is going around, I want to follow up a little bit on Durin's report regarding enrollment. So if you looked at your annual report or you looked at your budget document, you would see this.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but Stephen's telling me that we need to adjust our.
Yeah, let's adjust the agenda if you're willing, board.
I apologize for.
Sure. If you could allow Megan Oshler to make her presentation.
Sure.
And she's certainly been instrumental in this Twenty-First Century and the SEEK program. And we have her scheduled. She has some other commitments at home, so as a.
Sorry about that, I wasn't aware.
As a parent, we don't want to interfere with that parenting skills going on there, so.
So I wasn't really aware of where I had to be for the camera, so I'm going to try to kind of maneuver this a little bit.
I told her about the camera. I, you know, I'm trying to take care of you there. Why don't you push the table under there? Who's got the table under there? There you go.
Oh, that's, thank you. I just want to let you guys know, I'm Megan Oshler. And as you know, our district received the Twenty-First Century Grant last year. And here at Leland and Gray, that's allowed us to really expand on the after-school programming that is offered. And it's not just after-school. It's in the morning, it's after-school, it's on the weekends, and now it's in the summer as well. And that's really what I'm here to talk to you about, is try, and I will try my best to sort of get across some of the magic that happened here this summer, because it really was an amazing summer. And I have this great picture here, but you don't see it.
Get on, actually.
I think it probably is sleeping. And if there's someone who knows what to do to wake it up.
Are you sleeping?
Get up!
Tell us what SEEK stands for.
Summer Educational Enrichment Camp. And it's students and counselors who were our amazing counselors here this summer. We hired eight high school students to work this summer. And really, they became sort of the cornerstone of what went on here, along with some of the teachers, came up with the name of the camp. So that was kind of how it developed. So the grant allowed us to offer this summer program to seventh and eighth graders in our district for free, which was, as you know, is a pretty great opportunity for our community. And a lot of students took advantage of it. And here are some of them now. So you should all have received a handout from Durin with some of this information on there. And if you could just refer to that throughout, that would be helpful.
Does everybody have an electronic one?
So the, oh, great. So the campus design for seventh and eighth graders coming into Leland and Gray. And as you know, our SU covers a wide geographical area. So these students are coming from as far as Marlborough and Wyndham and Jamaica and Dover and, you know, all of our schools. And some of them are coming from places where, you know, like Wyndham, where they literally graduated with three. Or, you know, in Newfane, they had a big class. And I'm not sure what the exact number was, but I'm pretty sure it was fewer than twenty in all of our schools. And so then they're coming into Leland and Gray to a class of sixty, to a school of close to four hundred. And that's a really big change for them. It's a big change academically to have so many different teachers. It's a big change for them socially to have all of these new peers. And the idea of SEEK was to bridge that gap and help them to find a home here at Leland and Gray, so that with those feelings of safety will come the greater ability to access their education. So there are sort of four main goals of the SEEK program as written into the grant, and that we developed in developing this program under the what. And so Bruce Whitman's here. He was one of the teachers here at SEEK and instrumental in creating the culture of the SEEK program.
So, you know, I look at these pictures and I feel like really nostalgic. I really do. I like, want to go back.
You can see the T-shirt on.
Yeah, I know, I know. That wasn't planned, by the way. But it's sort of like this. When I look at these pictures and I see Megan, and I don't see Megan too much anymore, or I see Ben, who I hope there's a picture up there of Ben. It's like, we have this little secret. I don't know if you feel that way. It's this little secret, like we found the secret of the universe for those three weeks. And I want to bottle it, and I want to keep it, and I want to bring it to Leland and Gray and make Leland and Gray like these three weeks were. Okay, enough of that. But we did some, you know, education. Obviously, in a week's worth of time with the students, we couldn't do a bunch of stuff that will improve their Kneecap scores, okay? We couldn't do a lot of stuff, you know, that will get them super-prepared for coming to Leland and Gray or super-prepared for going to eighth grade. But we could make it, you know, enriching in the sense that it was exploration for them. And I think we did a great job. The robotics class was a huge success, okay? The writing classes certainly stretched out. Some incredible writing stuff, like going over to the cemetery, finding a, you know, a headstone, and then writing a story about that person. That's so creative, that's so good to me, you know, being a science geek, but. You know, in the sciences, we could actually go out and do things, like look for life in Millbrook II, to make things blow up. Don't worry, nobody got hurt, or be all set, okay? And do this. So we had that in the morning, this academic time. Well, I hope that transfers into improved stuff at Leland and Gray. Of course they do. But if we can just make it exciting and say, wow, it's okay to like science and like writing, that's pretty cool.
And they did, all of them. Even the students who came in on the first day didn't want to write a single word on a piece of paper on their first day in that writing class. At the end, Ben and the counselors in that class had to actually stop them to go to lunch. And they're like, okay, I'm almost done, I'm almost done. That's pretty incredible. Building relationships was a really big part of what happened here this summer.
You know, if you want to know if SEEK was a success, you know, don't, again, I'm going to reference the Kneecap scores. Don't look at that. Do we? If our main job was to make the incoming seventh graders feel safe, or Sam Crowther, stop crossing his eyes, feel safe at Leland and Gray and no adults here and no people here, then we hit a home run. There's no doubt about that to me. Do you feel that way?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I tell you just a quick story about this young lady? This young lady didn't know me at all. I didn't, I'm not sure even had her in a class at SEEK, okay? But I'm coaching middle school soccer, and the first day, she's a seventh grader from Jamaica. And she came in and she was distraught. We're talking crisis time. She lost her paperwork for soccer, her athletic contract and her physical. She didn't know me from Adam before here, but she came up to me and said, look, I lost this stuff. So she felt comfortable as a seventh grader who didn't know anybody at Leland and Gray to come up and talk to me about it. And we were able to work it out. That was our task, then we did a great job. And she's playing soccer, too, so that's good.
So our day was really split. In the morning, students signed up to be, to take one of these academic classes, the writing, the robotics, the science class. And in the afternoon, they signed up for a full week of one of these enrichment classes, like woodworking, cooking, team sports, ceramics, that kind of thing.
This was really important to get those students on a different level. Instead of me teaching science, I get to go out and play, you know, we played soccer, we played mat ball, we did lots of different things. We went swimming in Millbrook, which I'm not sure was allowed, but we did it anyway. But the ceramics here or the woodworking, you know, really gave the kids pride and got to know the adults here in a different way. You know, I'm not just a science geek who talks about meteorology and chemistry and physics, but I like to, I like to play soccer. I like to do this kind of thing. And that relationship building was, I think, almost as crucial as the academics. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
And then the recreational activities that were here. These girls didn't know each other before SEEK. At least some of them didn't know each other.
There's one from Athens over there on the right. I don't know where the other two are from, but. Yeah, building relationships was a big deal. And we'll talk a little bit about full value, I guess, in a future slide. But it was, it was really about community. And I want you guys to remember the word "community" when I get to the full value rap about this.
And it's important, I think, that these activities that we did were both challenging. They were meant to challenge them, to push them a little bit. But because it was safe here and because those relationships existed, we could push them just to where they were feeling comfortable, sort of stepping over that line of comfort, to do something to make themselves look silly, to put themselves out there, to try something that's hard, to try something they didn't think that they were good at. And they felt safe with the people here and in the space to do that. And that came out in their writing and in building robots and in building a picture frame out of wood and in playing tag. And in science, of course.
Yeah, full value. This is really hard for me to describe. And I was thinking about it coming in today. Full value was something that I taught at the Upper Bound Program at King State College for a long time. And just to give you guys, I know we've got short time, a little bit of history about the King State Upper Bound Program. That actually, all these values started at Leland and Gray back in the nineteen seventies. Alan Glotzer was a teacher here. Alan became the assistant director of Upper Bound and eventually led trio programs at King State. This idea really developed at Leland and Gray back in the seventies. Full value, I call it, it's okay to be me. That it doesn't matter who I am, I'm going to be respected within the community. That if, you know, I like to wear tie-dye and shorts and this, that's fine, okay? Or if somebody likes to, I don't know, be different in some way, it's okay. We're going to respect that. So this really became our mantra, full value. It's okay to be nice and it's okay to be me. And that, to me, is crucial to this program, to maintain that. And just to give you a short story. The last day of SEEK during M and M, which was movement in more, kind of like, how would you describe that? Recess? No, it wasn't really recess, but it was a structured recess.
It was like everything from, you know, sort of science exploration to yoga and everything in between.
Yeah. And we had a mat ball game. Now, I'm not going to describe what mat ball is, but it's a competitive game based on kickball. And when you have this situation, you always have these kids who just want to win at all costs. You know, you get these competitive kids, they're going to do this. And then you have the kids who don't want to participate at all. And the coalescing moment for me, and I don't know about you, but we've talked about this, was at that point, we all came together. That the kids who were really competitive were cheering on the kids who didn't want to do it. The kids who didn't want to do it participated.
And not just the kids who didn't want to do it, but the kids who didn't want to do it on the other team. There was not a kid that came up to bat that didn't have fifteen people cheering for them. And I mean, literally not one kid. And, you know, those kids are here at Leland and Gray and they see me in the hall and they see each other in the hall, and they stop what they're doing with their friends. And these kids are twelve and thirteen years old. There's nothing that's stopping them from doing what they're doing with their friends. And they say hi, or they ask a question, and they bring me their schedule and say, oh my God, what does this mean? Where am I supposed to be right now? Because they feel safe.
That was the point, that we became community. And I wanted to play, I wanted to play mat ball for like four hours. I didn't want to stop. I didn't want to go back and teach science. I didn't want to go swimming in Millbrook. I just wanted to play mat ball for four hours, because it was like the coolest, no, seriously, it was like the coolest night for me, okay? So full value is something that, as SEEK continues, that I really think has to become our central value here. I just got to say, I almost stopped. I got to say a couple more things. The brilliance of Jenny and Megan and Heiner, our counselors, was amazing. They made the program. They really made it. It wasn't me, it wasn't, you know, Ruth Ann, it wasn't Kristen, it wasn't teachers, it wasn't Jenny or Megan, it was the counselors. It wasn't Jenny or Megan, it was the counselors. That was brilliant. So I applaud you for that, okay? Secondly, we need your help, okay? If you, you know, and I came in a little late and you were talking about recruitment and retainment at people at Leland and Gray. We need to be able to get into each and every one of your schools to talk about this program, okay? And last year, we got into three. We got into Townsend, Jamaica and Lordsboro. This year, what we've got to do to recruit this program is not bring old guys like me, okay? What we've got to do is bring the seventh graders incoming from their school and say, please come to SEEK, okay? And we need the support of the administration here and the school board members here to talk to the principals and allow students, because we weren't allowed into Newburgh, okay? And I don't think we approached women, so I'm not going to slay women too hard. And Marlborough, I don't know why we didn't name Marlborough, we knew Marlborough. We need that. That will help in the goal of getting kids to come here and getting kids to stay here. I guarantee it. Right? Can you believe that?
These kids all came in with friends, every one of them. Even the kids who came from schools with only three kids. And it wasn't just the kids who were playing soccer. It wasn't just the kids who already knew each other from something else. Every single one of those kids came in with friends and therefore felt safer sitting in that class on that first day so that they could learn math and science and English because they felt safe being there. They had breakfast and they had friends, and that's really what they need, yeah.
We need your help, so, anyway.
Oh, speaking of those counselors.
Whoops.
During the last week of SEEK, Durin recognized this, the amazing counselors that we had and what was happening with these counselors and the leadership role that they had taken and what was happening for the seventh graders that were here because of those relationships with the high school students. They weren't big scary high school kids anymore. And those are kids that are, they feel like they have an older person in this building that is cool and says hi to them in the hall and makes walking through B level a little less scary. So she got a cake and we all sat right here, down here, and had lunch together. And we went around and each of the students, I said, just think about the counselors in the last three weeks and what, think of something that you appreciate about them. And the first kid that was supposed to seek said, I want to go last. And then all the kids, and I said, uh-oh. And said, okay, we'll come back to you. And so we went all the way around and back to him, and this is, this is what he said.
Top one.
Oh, and for you, I really didn't want to come the first week and I was really mad on the car coming. Now I'm glad I came. Dr. Dorkman, is this going to be around in a few years? She responded, because I want to be a counselor and an astrophysicist.
And just to let you know, this was a kid who was basically forced to come, okay? As a requirement to progress on at school.
And he showed up every single day. And this counselor here said that she learned a lot. I learned that I like working with middle school age kids and I also feel like I grew as a person because I'm really shy and she is.
Yes, she is.
And don't like public speaking or having attention on me. But at SEEK, it didn't bother me and even now I feel less shy in public situations. I just hired her to go work at one of the elementary schools after school. And I didn't have to go get her. She came to me and said, I want to do this. Yeah, that school is psyched to have her. And I see it in this student. And so, it was survey when the kids first got here and then as they were leaving. And you have the results here. This was a pre-post survey that was given to all of the students. And the percentage that you see showed improvement or greater readiness. So their answer improved. They felt safer. They felt more like they were looking forward to school after SEEK was, after they had spent some time at SEEK. So this, these are the numbers that show an improvement in each of those areas. And that's it. If anyone has any questions.
Questions, we create.
So this is a free program.
Mm-hmm.
And do you have limits on enrollment or you can just take a gazillion? I mean, what's your...
We would love to have that problem, that we have too many kids.
So you're just, what do you have, like 20 this year?
No, we...
No, we had 46 total students that signed up. We had 32 seventh graders of the, how many? Did you say 54? 14 eighth graders. So there was 59% of the seventh grade that came and 22% of the eighth grade. I imagine next year we'll have a greater percent of the eighth grade.
So you'd like to have like 75, that would be...
100 would be great, yeah.
We have a budget that would cover about 50.
Don't worry about budgets.
We love 100, we can afford 50, but I'm sure if we got more, we'd find the money.
All right, all right. We also were able to offer free breakfast and lunch to anyone 18 and under that came. So that included all of the camps that were here and anyone else who was 18 or under that came could have got access to free breakfast and lunch during these programs.
Another question?
I'd really also just like to mention what Megan just said. If you could have been at the school this summer, you would have been amazed at how many students were engaged. From SEEK to soccer to performing arts to the explorers camp, which is over at Townsend this year, to Tom Connor's Chinese students. This place was just hopping. It was great to see all these kids engaged instead of sitting at home, you know, playing video games or doing whatever. It was so cool to see that. I don't know how you feel about that, but that was so cool. And one of the things that we need to maintain in this program is the bus. That was huge. The bus was huge. Without the bus, that wouldn't happen. Gas is too expensive.
I think that brought a lot of attention to the program because every morning when I went to work, there were a bunch of kids sitting out
Tons.
downtown Jamaica waiting to get a lot of kids.
It was so cool.
Yeah, and the buses riding all over the place.
You could just pick up along Route 30.
Yeah, I don't know how it would just...
From Rosenville to Newburgh Elementary. Yep. Just to get there, I'm certain.
But it was, it was critical because we've got transportation to and from.
Yeah, it's amazing.
And it was just so, so great.
You did this in July. Have you thought of the pros and cons of doing it in August? So that when it ends, school starts?
Hmm, that's an interesting question.
And we actually, we're going to be having a meeting at some point in the next month to discuss when all of the camps are happening. There have been parents who have expressed concern that many of these camps are going on at the same time, so their kids only had the opportunity to go to one and it's a long summer and they'd like to have more access.
Yeah.
You know, part of the problem is, I'm not a teacher, but if I were, would I want to be teaching a week before school starts? No. And there's just the accessibility of the spaces. So we'll be sitting down with all of these camps and seeing if we can play a little bit of shell games and move things around. But I doubt that it, I doubt that it'll be until late August. Does that answer your question, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, absolutely. No, I mean, I'm sure there's pros and cons. I'm just thinking, my son is a freshman in college. He started three weeks before everybody else. Freshmen at that school start three weeks before returning students. And they finished Labor Day, he came home for the weekend. On Tuesday, they were there with all the upperclassmen. And somehow he got to experience the place for three weeks with just freshmen.
Your point is really well taken because one of the things that we really talked about is how do we maintain SEEK throughout the school year? You know, so we had this, I don't know the date it ended, September 28th, July 28th, 29th.
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
Whatever, one of those days. How do we keep that SEEK feeling alive? So that's certainly something we talked about. We have a SEEK reunion plan for October or something. But your point's really well taken. Could we maintain it that way? I don't know.
Saban, I'll talk to you before we have that meeting. Can you just get some, get some thoughts on it?
It's a good idea.
Something that I would like to say is that I think that we were very lucky to entice Bruce away from Upper Bound, where he'd been for a very long time. And I thank Tom Connor for elbowing me night after night and saying, ask Bruce, ask Bruce. I didn't think Bruce would say yes. I didn't think he'd leave someplace if he was so happy. But incoming was a major clue for this program.
Well, thank you.
And Megan being the pied piper with students that she is was, you know, one of the other many key factors, but truly her energy and connection to kids made it happen.
Well, it was counselors, it wasn't us. It was counselors.
Thank you.
I just got to say something that has nothing to do with SEEK or anything like this. So you guys have BCTV showing here, school board meetings. I live in Athens, so we get back TV, Falls Area Community Television out of Bellas Falls. And I don't watch television unless it's the Bellas Falls School Board Meetings because that's entertainment.
It's the soonest we read in the paper.
Yeah, oh, it's great. I love watching. I don't watch TV.
This was a great, great presentation, first of all. And it sounds like an absolutely wonderful program. I actually thought I'd see Bruce while he was in the middle of the program at one point. You were really excited even at that point, and that's still carried over to today.
I'll tell you a story. I'll tell you a story. Last story and then I'll go away because I can tell stories all day. But the last day, we're sitting around, it's all over, and we're sort of sitting around under a tree going, what do we do now? You know, and I didn't want it to end, you know? I was like going to tell Megan, I said, look, I'll come back next week and you don't have to pay me. Because she keeps back here. But I walked down to my truck and it was over and Tammy Clausen saw me and she said, so you guys are done? Yeah, we're done, she says. So time to start your real summer. How do you feel? And I said, I'm bummed. I'm bummed. I didn't, I didn't want it to end. It was, it was special. It really was special. I can't, it sounds like hyperbole to me, but it really was.
Yeah.
Well, that's really great and I want to thank, you know, Jenny and the Twister Century.
Yeah.
You know, we're starting with certain ingredients, too, and the school for supporting it. And I can't say enough about, you know, how much this must have made a difference for our students. And I would love to see, what Bruce said, 100% participation. And, you know, if, like, creative thoughts, like what Saban was saying and others were saying, can happen. It's only going to support academics and, you know, student success, not just here, but beyond here. I mean, when you read what that counselor said about how she's changed and now has less fear of public speaking, I mean, that's going to be a lifelong impact. So, thank you. It's very exciting to hear this, it really is.
Can I say one more? Sorry about the time. I just want to say one thing. When I was a freshman in high school, I moved. And before I moved, and I have to say, I was, I was one of the kids, I was a popular kid. I didn't have issues with this. I got bullied every day by this one girl who was older than me. And some of the high school kids were really scaring me. And I cannot tell you a single thing I learned my freshman year of high school, but I can tell you what that girl's name was and what she says to me every day at my locker. And I moved, I went to a different school, didn't happen again. But then I went to sort of this alternative school that had some of this full value as part and community building is built into the day, like we did at SEEK. And we did recreational stuff and it was required and we all did it and we all had to do this enrichment stuff. And I can tell you what I learned in math that year. And I can tell you what I learned in science. You know, I can tell you about the science report I wrote about mating fruit flies because I didn't have to think about what Lori Cuddy was going to say to me at my locker. And I think that that happens here this summer for these kids. I think they came in ready for algebra, yeah.
And the transformation of our eighth grade, we have one student who was, sorry, I keep going on this. You guys keep me up. But he would come to the camp every day, I guess in seventh grade, with a hoodie up over his head and a sweatshirt. And it's 90 degrees out and I'm going, dude, it's 90 degrees, how can you have this hoodie on? And then one of the counselors noticed in week three that he was wearing a tie dye shirt. And today, even today, I was downstairs, I was talking to Marty and Tammy, and he walked by and he says, hey, Whip. Says, because that's what everybody calls me. That's how everybody calls me outside of Leland and Gray. Says, we've got to have another jousting contest. Trust me, it's okay. But the transformation of that kid for confidence was amazing. Okay, I'll go away.
Thank you so much. Yeah, Whip, this question, is it for Bruce?
No, it's for you.
Oh, okay.
Could we, just because of the public here, could we jump ahead by one? And I'm assuming that's what they're here to discuss is the music. It just seems like we're keeping them. That's what we're here for.
My guess is they really enjoyed themselves.
But the next one...
Over the last presentation, I'm sure.
Right, but the next one is probably in the one eight.
Well, let me ask the board if that's, and the administration, because it is pushing off a couple of things. And I should ask, I'll view it too, because there's a financial report that is usually pretty important. Maybe, maybe gold to some students, but it's fairly important to all of us and...
I'm not saying we don't do that.
And the other thing is the regional education district study. So I, we can bump it if the board would like to bump it up and if you guys want us to.
Yeah, I totally agree.
With moving it.
If they want to stay after.
I mean, Zoe's here, it's a school night.
Yeah, it's a school night.
I'm sure they don't need to do the financial report.
And does anybody want to work on this?
Yeah, somebody does need to do this.
I'll take it.
Okay, so we will...
Pass them around.
Again, thanks for, that was great, you know, having them to come here. And this is not something we can always have at any meeting and it's great. This is important for us to have that, so. Seek sounds exciting. I'll remember that. All right, so we're moving over. Frank, we'll hold Frank and we'll hold the regional education district study committee report and move on to review of music enrollment data. And that's huge for it. The name decided. And there was a piano, which I asked you to come in.
This information is to inform our conversation. Many questions have been asked and I couldn't answer. And I suggested that we do some digging and find out what we can over the past three years around music enrollment, the demographics of who is enrolled and if they give in, if they request. And so this is a beginning place for, well, sadly, a beginning place. This is another piece of information for our discussion as a board and for the community to take part in. And I actually would leave it to the chair because it kind of came from the board members to say, we want to keep talking about this, we want more information. And there's, there's so many different angles on this. I certainly don't want to downbeat it.
Okay, so you're looking for questions, comments from the board, is that what you're...
Uh-huh, and I think that there are some in the public who would like to speak to.
Clearly, the public is here to this, too, but...
Can I ask a quick, you question on the percentages?
I think there's some errors. I think there's some errors. So I make the request for data and I have, I don't want to doubt the numbers that are there, but the percentages, I already see some problems. But the note on the bottom, so if you look at the number, that, you know, the number, the enrollment percentage represents the percentage of the entire student body. So if you look at the fourth column where it says students eligible for free reduced meals, so the 10, so it basically says there are 10 students, which represent 32%. Just remember, it's 44% was here at Leland and Gray. So that's a, so I wouldn't say that every single percentage is wrong, but I have found an error or two.
And does that skew between middle school and high school or is student body considering the entire versus middle school and high school?
I think that maybe it works out that in the number of requests, if you take that to be percentage of the middle school or the percentage of high school, that's more accurate.
And in what, the definition of a request enrolled for a parent that has yet to have a high school student?
So a student will meet with the school counselor and make a request for, make requests for courses to enroll in and then do they actually get enrolled in a course?
Get in room and...
The master's schedule, which is the biggest bear. I mean, this is the, what we're looking at is, you know, the master's schedule is usually the area that we have most concern because it seems to be the area that we can do the most about. It's deceptive because there's a lot of factors that go into the master's schedule.
For those of us who've been on the board a while, we've been here this, every year forever. About the master's.
Yeah, but are there any other questions about this chart?
This general music, number of requests NA and then number enrolled.
It's just offered this year, right?
It started last year. So when we look at the year 2011, 12, there were no requests because we didn't offer it. We just enrolled middle school students and it's a middle school course.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah, yeah. We had room in the schedule, we had room in the teacher's schedule and we felt that this was a way for, especially for, it was primarily students who are not enrolled in middle school band or chorus. And we, there, before that, there was no music class for students who weren't already singing or playing instruments. So that's why we created general music. Created in the hopes of... Created in the hopes of value relationships.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll need to track that and see if they-
So, is there one thing that you can see here that's getting continually, where these kids are getting, that comes up as the big rub, I mean, or are they just, like, for every particular music offering, a different course that they're bumping up against, or is that-
I would say there are three issues.
Okay.
The, the first issue is that to enroll in high school band or chorus, it takes up 25% of your schedule all year, which is huge. There are, you know, you need four years of science to graduate, which is new for a freshman, four years of English, and, but that's only one semester, so I shouldn't even say four years, it's four credits. So, there really is nothing else in our, our course offerings in which a student would have fall and spring in the same subject area. Now, some students do want to do two maths in a year or two sciences in a year, but that's the exception. Whereas, our expectation for high school band and chorus, correctly or wrong, is we want them to be in it all year. So, it's a very, very big expectation. So, that, that's one thing that emerged for me in this process. The other is that by basically every measure, our, we are disproportionately representing students who are from middle or upper-income families. And it's not, and with our changing demographics, if we don't make attempts to attract our media students, we will continue to see declining enrollment. Or, I mean, I'd like to say that we're gonna stop at 44% free reduced meals eligibility. We'll get a big recovery coming right up, so maybe we'll go in the opposite direction. And the same is true of a learning plan, because about 30 to 40% of our students have some form of learning plan, like a special education, EST, or, or a 504 plan. We have at this point, like, 70 regular education students who have an EST plan. It's a huge number of kids. Basically, why do they, why do they have an EST plan? Because they're failing more than one of their classes. And so, we're, so they're underrepresented, underrepresented as well. So, I would love to include in the, say, EST process, you're failing math, why don't you learn an instrument? I mean, I say that with all honesty, you know, those are some of the factors that we're looking at. Are you challenged enough in school? Are you taking a foreign language? So, so those are the three things that I glean out of looking at that enrollment. Besides the fact that the overall enrollment of the school, it's, you know, with shrinking enrollment, we had about 450 students 10 years ago, and now we have 365. So, that, that's, that's huge. And if we look at where did that, we lose that population in Dover and New Haven, we're talking 70 kids, perhaps. I mean, I can, I have the document open, so I can tell you how, exactly how many fewer kids we have from those towns, which were the, our higher-income towns. So, that's all part of this puzzle.
What, our feeders are elementary school kids, and how is that going? Do they take band? Do they, you know, do chorus? Well, I guess they all do chorus, but are they doing instruments?
I think our music teachers can also-
I can see that, and the parents, too.
There are, there are good numbers in band. Not all schools have chorus, but both, but the schools where I teach, we have chorus, and that's doing well, and band was doing well, so I understand.
No wonder. I wonder what happens between elementary school and-
I think it's a schedule.
Well, yeah, kids, kids have a choice, and there is a choice sometimes in the elementary school, but generally, it's part of the program. Instrumental music is usually a choice, but-
No, it's a choice, it's a challenge.
It's, it's, yeah. And it calls extra commitment from parents to continue in the elementary school band program, which might be part of why some kids don't, don't continue from, from the free and reduced lunch kids. They need parental support in order to be able to keep it up, and so those kids often quit. I don't know what to do about that. We need to get better parents.
Thanks a lot.
I had a lot of stuff to say, and I don't know, I'm, I'm feeling like I'm maybe gonna back out on some of it. But, um, the situation of high school music, I'm just throwing this out, is really bad at the moment. The, the numbers on this are, even though they are correct in some ways, don't really paint the picture.
Can I jump in for just a second?
Sure.
Speaking simply for high school band, I don't have 13 students. I have 10, and three of whom leave halfway through the rehearsal. So, that leaves me with seven.
My son is one of them, because we could not get band to fit in the schedule.
So, I'm sorry, Ron, I just wanted to say that, that not all the numbers are all the way correct.
Well, it's total for the year.
Yeah.
So, over the course of the year, you'll have, right, there are 13 students in high school, yeah. You don't have, see, that's part of the problem, that, you know, we have a semester of schedule for the majority of our courses, so. We don't mean to sound defensive or anything, but that number is right.
And I don't either, but the chorus number for high school chorus as well, my class is 10 students now. It's not 16, and it's the same thing. There are six more that are signed up to be in in one semester. This, a lot of these students that are signed up that aren't there, aren't there because the only section of chemistry is during band and chorus. So, juniors who are, who are the leaders of our band and chorus have been scheduled out this year. Last year, it was-
Math. I haven't been in band and chorus since freshman year, because I had to take my math classes and not my chemistry.
So, you always did.
I have, band is an independent study right now, because it alternates with my driver's ed class, but a lot of the time, I get taken out because I have to fill in other requirements. I was in band last semester because of journey, but that's the only time since freshman year I've done it.
And Evan is Chinese. If he hadn't been able to fit in Chinese this year, he needed Chinese 2, because he already finished Chinese 1 in middle school. So, he hadn't had Chinese since first half of the year of eighth grade, and they didn't, they weren't able to put it in the schedule at all for ninth grade. So, he would have had the entire ninth grade year as a gap and lose all of his achievement in that class. And he was a 98 in that class, and not have for a whole year, how would he have retained all of that? So, we cut band in half, so that he could stick with band, which is a requirement in our house, that our children take part in some form of music, and still be able to give him that Chinese piece, his foreign language.
That was exactly the choice that we faced. My son ended up doing the full band program instead of taking Chinese 2 for half of the band program. So, by the time he gets into Chinese 2, he's going to have been out for a year and a half away from the language. And that's if he can't get into it next year.
And so, I think I have to bring this up, because I don't think it's been public yet. And, um, we've had several meetings, and I have so much respect for you. I really do, and I think the things that you're doing, the, the time and effort you put into this school is just phenomenal. But, we haven't really had a substantive scheduling talk. And they have always asked, about two years ago, and I don't know what came through, it was somebody else, the idea that band should be before school, in, in something called zero period, which, when you're feeling marginalized, and to have somebody say, "How about zero period?", it's not a good start. But then, the idea is that band starts before school, before the buses get there, at maybe 7 o'clock. We don't, we never discussed the exact time. But, there's no, no, nobody's going to give them a ride except the parents. There's no provision to get the kids to this class, and 14-year-olds don't drive. And I have the idea that most, most parents will find it to be hardship to bring their kid to school every day for four years, or until they get their driver's license for a whole year.
Special things anymore?
We have the, the second-largest geographical area of any supervisor union in the state. Kids come from 40 minutes away, which means that a parent would have to drive their kid, some parents would have to drive if they're coming from Dover or Fort Spur. They drive half an hour, 40 minutes one way, drive back, or, it just seems so insurmountable, that it's almost for sure to kill everything completely. I feel like also, there's been discussion in this board, I think, about teenagers' sleep habits and, and how they really are no good in the morning. So, let's give them band. I, I was a parent, you know, I still am a parent, but I was a parent of a high school student for a number of years. And getting up in the morning is not a simple chore. And getting up in the morning an hour earlier than is needed is not something that's gonna last. So, I feel very strongly that that suggestion is the death knell to the music department. I don't mean to be dramatic here, but that's a feeling I have. I don't know. If I'm wrong, somebody tell me.
Do you want to talk about nine period?
I don't know if I was supposed to, but I brought it up today in band, and I was surprised at the negative reaction of the students.
About the zero?
No, nine period, which is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we heard about it at the dinner table tonight. Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna play my naivety card here. I don't really know, I'm brand new, and I live up in Chippewa County. But, you know, student cited sports, drama, transportation, jobs, homework. Those were the biggies, I would say, that, for my seven kids, that came out of that discussion. Some of them have to work. I'm wondering if that's an economic necessity. But, that was really the response.
I got sports.
Personally, I somewhat opened that idea as long, if, well, I was, until I heard that feedback. I was under the impression that most high school sports begin at 4 o'clock, but I guess that's really mostly true in the fall. Winter, that changes.
Well, on non-game days. I mean, if they have a game, sometimes they're getting out at quarter after 2:00 or earlier if they're traveling. But, yeah, Evan cited homework, and, because the high schoolers will use that time directly after school until 4 o'clock to do their homework. I mean, Evan knows his butt better be in the library if I got out at 1:00, you know? That's their time, because then it's sports till 6:00, then they get home, and it's dinner, and it's finishing up any homework, and still getting the bed a decent amount, you know, so that they're not, so that they're not, you know, up all night doing homework.
I just also wanted to say another thing that we started talking about for the first time, is looking at band or chorus being a period-long for the year, which would be an eighth of the day. So, let's just say, a student chooses to do band, that's an eighth of the day, rather than a quarter of the day for the year. So, that might make a big difference.
That's something I'd like to talk about. Our discussions have always ended with, "What about zero period?" And I said, "I don't want to do it," and that was the end. We don't, there's no more discussion. That is a possibility. It's, it's a step backwards, but if it could get kids in the door, the problems, the easy-to-count-all problems for us are that it seems like then band and chorus, I think, still might be better, but at the same time, it means we would share kids. It would mean we'd only have, it would cut down on the personal time a lot.
So, so if I, I'm sorry. Okay, we're done, sorry.
And we only have one music group. So, it would mean, and it's possible. In fact, when I first started here, I did chorus in the French room, right across there. And it, that's part of why, no, I don't want to do it, because it was awful. I had to play the piano behind my back, and the kids had to sit, 30 kids had to sit on the front of the desks, and it was just really not conducive to what we were trying to do. But, we did a good job anyway. And so, there's some possibility of bending in that way. That's actually what I'm saying. It's never been discussed. This is the first time that we've ever thought about this.
No, great. Now, band is every other day, supposedly, for a block. And then it would go, Duran, you're putting, as you're proposing, it to be a period-long every day, all year?
Not a block.
Not, right.
I, I mean, it's something that is worthy of discussion, so I don't know if it's every day or every other day. I mean, now you're saying, well, maybe it's scheduled at the same time, so we can share kids. And this is all part of, I mean, we've been talking about this for, you know, two and a quarter years, at least, and assuming we're talking about the future.
So, what I think it really needs is this. And the computer doesn't know everything. I, I, and I don't want to suggest anybody does a lot more work, but I think it, it needs a lot more work. We have some of these parents that are here advocated for their kids and got closer to what they wanted. And I think we need to advocate for all the kids. I think we have to go through the whole explicit deleted schedule and say, "How's this kid's schedule looking? Did they get what they need? Are they going?" And I know the, the counselors do that somewhat, but they don't see the whole thing, and there's, it needs to stay in flux for long enough, so that you can actually... There's also, I, there's the concept, it doesn't have to do with music, but kids are different, and there are some kids that don't do so well together, and all of that. I think we need to spend four times as much on the schedule, and I know that hours and hours and hours are already spent.
And that's not possible, because the school is small. I mean, that causes the problem, only having one section.
Jay has a question. Go ahead, Jay.
At one time, Lee Wood and Gray had a vibrant music program, and what was the scheduling like back then?
Well, I mean, I'll just tell you from my perspective, and Stephen could answer it much better, but I've never heard that there's ever been a year where the scheduling hasn't been an issue. For every, every single year has always issued with kids. When my kids were here, there were issues with getting into the music programs, or getting into higher-level academic programs, or whatever. I mean, it's a perpetual problem.
Yeah, but the point is that we really did have a vibrant, we had 40 kids in chorus.
I was just talking about the schedule. It's always been a problem.
But either his question was, how are we able to have 40 kids at the evening?
What was different back then, than where they're at today?
The academic word is strong. There weren't as many science requirements.
Right.
There, there wasn't the push to have kids do math early in their careers.
The academic push has been much bigger. As we know, as we've sat here on the board, and we've talked about this over and over again, we've been looking at data, we've been looking at test scores, we've been looking at all different levels of feedback from every angle. And we, what we've come down to, as you all know, is that we need to strengthen our academic program to make sure our students are prepared for life beyond here. Now, music is a part of that. There isn't, no question, music is a part of that. A full education, we've all said, a full, well-rounded education is critical to our students' success in the future. But, but as time has gone, honestly, there are more, I mean, if you all remember, we were sitting here a couple of years ago with the same kinds of requests over foreign language, too. And what we've done, we've strengthened that area as well. But, I mean, honestly, this is, it can happen in any department, I would assume, you know, wherever there's-
Well, there's also six sections of French, six sections of Chinese, plus independent studies that the foreign language teachers take on. We have one section of band. So, that's another, another thing that we're, it's, it's like immovable in the schedule. It's not, kids, well, we do the hand scheduling, which happens for every student. That is something you can see, is that in algebra, I mean, we just, when school started, we realized we had to open- realized we had to open up a third section of algebra because it was basically over-enrolled. It was new for us because it's required for all freshmen who haven't had it before. So we were able to do that because we had three teachers. So three sections of Algebra I in one period. And, but band is in, in, in one block with one teacher and in one facility.
And grades nine through twelve.
In grades nine through twelve, yes. So, but also, Jay, I think it's important to, I don't know if the numbers show this so much, but I am curious about the, the, for high school band, two years or three, yeah, two years ago, there were twenty-nine requests. This year, it's, it's nineteen. Now, there may have been a couple of kids who, who didn't get to the request point or who said, it sounds like, well, Zoe had to make some other, I don't know if you requested music or not.
I'm actually enrolled in band and one of those thirteen kids that's taking a second year.
Oh, I see. So, okay.
There are, I do think that there were some kids, I, I'm not sure, but I think that the requests are the ones of the kids who got entered into the computer as requesting it. I do think that there were some kids who needed to get so many classes. They want band, but it's just obvious if you're gonna take two math classes and, and assign, you know, there were kids that had to do that. And so their, their eight blocks are full. So it wasn't requested because it was just not, it was a moot point.
They knew it, right. They knew that it wasn't gonna be possible.
Yeah, so they didn't request it. And I must say that with these tiny numbers, recruitment is, recruitment, all the best musicians that have come out of Leland and Gray, many of the best musicians that have come out of Leland and Gray cite a particular kid, usually three or four years ahead of them, that was there like they saw, I saw Tessa Anderson and I wanted to be her. You know, that's what they say, the ones that are still playing say, that was it. So now, in, in the next concert, we're only gonna have a couple of kids. It's, it's, it's spiraling down and the new kids aren't saying, I want to be that kid because that kid is not there.
Okay, thank you, Ron. There's a couple of hands up and I don't really want to say something else.
Actually, a couple of thoughts. With, could this, like this year be like a transition year because you are doing more academic requirements early on? Could that mean that possibly as kids are older, get up in the higher grades, they can fit band in easier, do you think?
There are plenty of kids with free passes, plenty of juniors and seniors who have, who have, you know, one block a day that's, that's, they have, they're, they're in the library or they're in the cafeteria. So the, the students are here. I, I'm concerned about our changing demographics and who is actually choosing to be in band.
Well, I have one more thing, just one more thing. I do know that this whole thing is a concern at the college level also. Because I happen to, when I dropped Sarah off at school, go do a tour of the Performing Arts Library. I did a library thing and, and they mentioned the fact that a lot of high schools are cutting music and that that's a problem for them. And it's, it's causing issues for the continuation of their programs in the higher educational level because they don't have so many kids coming in prepared for college-level music and that's a concern for them.
I have something pleased to add to that because I've read studies about students, children who have been brought up in music, that their brains are able to function in out-of-the-box thinking and different dynamics because they've had that training in music. And, I mean, and that's sad for me to hear that with the colleges because we're having all these pushes for academics and of course, academics is absolutely an important, the most important piece, but music should be right there. Music should be considered as part of academics because it's, it's helping your brain.
Right, we've had, we've had reports on that at the board level here as well.
I just wanted to mention very briefly that it's been my experience, and I've taught for a number of years at other schools, is that if students don't do band in freshman or sophomore year, you don't get a backup, they're gone. Think about the length of a year to a fourteen-year-old, you know, it's a lifetime practically. And, and so while I'd love to have juniors and seniors, if we lose them in ninth and tenth grade, they're gone.
So, does the board have any other questions about this specifically? Because one of the things I just want to caution about is that I, I, I mean, I think this is really important and I'm thrilled that we've had this kind of feedback and everything, but we don't touch the schedule. It's not in our, you know, it's not part of our job. So I think it's really important that we share if music is of value to us as board members and that we, I think, I think I can speak for it because I think we've always supported the music program, but we've also always supported the other academic and elective courses or programs that we have here. And there are many in this school and we have never shown anything but support for that. We also support the administration and, and.
Well, I'm curious, Durin, would, will you explore, or you, it sounds like you guys are gonna be willing to explore the idea of chorus being at least one hour? Like, that's, you're trying, trying to figure out a place to go from here.
I think she's talking about the one period.
Yeah, the one period.
We've been, we've been in conversation since I started here to, to, to come up with a solution.
Who decides, I'm sorry, Emily, I have a question about what you just said. Who does decide how the scheduling goes for the school as a whole? Like block, like this year, I was very pleased to see that we're doing some period-long classes, we're doing, you know, these modified block scheduling where we've got global studies and math going year-round. You know, the math is a big thing I'm really excited about that they're gonna have all year-round so that they keep that, you know, they're, they're practicing their skills all year and not having, you know, such as that.
And that comes from, that comes from the, the administration and they actually came to us last year and spoke to us about modifying block, they're investigating and looking at it. I mean, Durin could answer that question more. The board certainly has no ability to work in that area.
So, and you're saying it's Durin and the staff at school that decide?
It's, it's the administration's responsibility and then they set up a team, I think, is the way it works.
Yes, there's a team of three other people in addition to myself and.
Thank you.
There are other suggestions that we've talked about. We don't have to list every single one of them in terms of recruitment strategies and keeping students up with their music lessons, whether they can actually enroll in, in band or chorus. And adding, having students being, middle school students being able to earn high school credit in band if they meet a certain level of proficiency. That was something we started last year, so we're, it's not that the issue's been during.
Okay. Yeah. I haven't found a middle school kid yet that understood why they would want a high school credit in music. The only thing that that gets them is that they wouldn't have to take music in high school.
Boy, we don't have that problem with foreign language.
Yeah.
And, and our, and, you know, in student grades, the third and fourth levels foreign language are gonna be getting college credit. So maybe that's another direction that we can head in with a dual credit for the upper level students in band and chorus.
That's creative, thank you.
If I could just observe, to reinforce what Emily's pointing out in terms of role and responsibility administration versus the board and so forth, is the board decides the goals and the outcomes we seek and, and provides the means for those. And then, you know, the details of how that comes about really is a matter of a collaborative, continuing collaborative discussion and reflective practice with the staff and, and Durin and the administrative leadership. I, I caution us all to make sure that we remain on the positive about what can happen and what can be done rather than constantly fall back on, well, you know, this we can't control. I mean, there's some jokes about some things here that I, you know, I think we should caution ourselves in the public discussion. I mean, we should be engaging in this challenge professionally and we, we certainly should be exploring all the things that we control. We control, I say we, the administration and the, and the staff control many of the inputs that are possible to make a program happen. The time, the schedule, the personnel, the contract, in many schools, you have no ability to change a teacher's contract or adjust the hours of employment. In fact, in this SU, we are able to do that. So you can be creative, more creative than some other places. I mean, I'm trying to just emphasize the positive attributes we have here. We certainly have very good teachers, you know, very gifted people with a great record of performance. We don't have, we may say, okay, we don't have enough kids. Well, I point out that if we had all the kids in the world and the biggest schools possible, let's say Brattleboro with thirteen hundred students, how many do they have in band?
Around a hundred.
Around a hundred. It's less than ten percent.
But the contrary, Stephen, we went and visited Mill River this past spring and they're closer to our numbers and they have an extremely vibrant band and we have a, kind of example of their.
So that's the kind of creative work that has to be pursued so that we can see what they're doing and if it is transferable. We don't need to remake the wheel here. We need to be exploring what is happening. If you want the extreme example, you can go to Frank Rucker's alma mater and a hundred percent of the people in band and chorus.
One of the, the elementary school, my son's there right now, you know, the, the concerts of third through sixth graders, it's a pretty substantial number of students that are in those between chorus and band. And that those students are falling off. And I guess my, my concern, the concern I've heard from a number of people that are represented here, is that they want a good college curatory high school for their child, they want to be able to have four years of music in chorus or band, one or the other, and take rigorous academic work and they're feeling rock in a hard place. My kid has to drop one of those four years to take this, to take this academic course they really want to take or they're not taking that kind of course because they want to stay in band or chorus for four years.
And that is.
If they can get out of that rock.
Whether you have a vibrant music program or a waiting music program.
Well, it's a significant difference compared to ten years ago too.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, I think that would be the issue at hand that as an administrator you should have.
But we need to, we need to try to address it in a greater, a positive way. I have a couple of other ideas noted here, but actually, I don't think the board meeting is the time for the ideas to be debated or discussed. It really needs to come at the professional level within the building, so I'm gonna share those with.
Well, well, the one thing I, I, I'm gonna just say that I, if the board disagrees with me, you can speak up, but that we support what Jeremy said. We want to be able to have our kids have a vibrant music program, a vibrant foreign language program, vibrant academics, you name it, we, we support that. But we are very cautious about, we don't run the school. You know, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's critical to us to make sure that our kids' are, needs are being met. So we lean to the administration and we look at outcomes.
I will say that I'm very optimistic about this SU because none of my boards are test scores obsessed. Many of my colleagues have boards that say, all I care about is a kneecap, get the darn kneecap up. We don't have that situation that's in this region, in our schools, okay? We certainly have to be concerned about whether we're in adequate yearly progress. We certainly have to be concerned about whether kids can perform adequately in mathematics and, and language arts in the eleventh grade. That's a problem we've got in this school. But the, the boards at the elementary school level are not cutting nor directing the administration to cut the arts, to cut music, to cut PE. In fact, the rationale, one of the rationales for Brooklyn New Fank binding was to get more PE, musical opportunity for the students and counseling. So, you know, we have a lot of things going for us here, but we have to build on it from the elementary level and look at it at the long, long term because as Jeremy says, there are lots of kids involved in the elementary school. So it's, it's not gonna be an easy solution, but I, I do want to make sure that you are sharing with me, either as board members or as parents, your concerns about the issue and what solutions, as you've just suggested, you know, are, are worth pursuing.
Following Stephen's input, could I end this on a happy note? It's been unhappy.
I'm a happy guy.
We've started a technology of music course, it'll take less than a minute, technology of music course here at Leland and Gray and students learn music theory, music composition, psychology, physiology, they work on writing skills. We're off to a pretty good start, we've got about five kids, but the really happy thing I wanted to share with you is that one of my former students from Mount Mansfield, who is a sound engineer, has been very successful and he gave us a, as long as we wanted, a loan of about fifteen thousand dollars' worth of sound and recording equipment. I just wanted to share that, it's a happy thing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And thank you, I know this was a big chunk of time and it's, it's getting late, so thanks.
Very important for us all, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to, where were we? We'll go, oh, we got back to you, Frank.
Okay.
You had a hand up here. You get into it.
Yeah, and speaking of, thank you, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't get one.
No, and if, if there are, that's fine, I just, if there are.
Do you have an extra?
Yep, we do.
Sorry, Paul.
Sure.
Just easier for you to see.
Emily, I don't know if I copied you on a, a thank you note to Ralph Coleman and Charlie Marchant.
No, you didn't.
I did. I meant to do that. I wrote on behalf of the board a, a thank you to Ralph Coleman, Charlie Marchant, and I can't think of our, our third, our third person that joined that group. I will, you know, make sure the, make sure the correspondence is, is in your box so we can make it official, but they went out to Somerset over the summer and did some trail clearing on the Leland and Gray property and it's really, really neat to see their commitment to etching out the battery lines and prepping the site for, for student use, general community use.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thanks for writing that.
Okay, let's see, a couple of things. I was gonna follow up on Durin's enrollment report. Just a quick, quick point of reference related to our budget plan versus our current enrollment. So our budget plan was three hundred and sixty-seven students. That, that was in the, this document here that you may remember and you have, it's our enrollment chart projection. Durin mentioned about three hundred and sixty kids. That number will change, we know that will change sometimes weekly, but when we look at tuition students, unfortunately, you know, the, the numbers that we're looking at between where we thought we would be based on existing enrollment, what we knew last November when we're putting together the budget in terms of sixth graders coming into the system, seniors leaving, that was three sixty-seven. Now we're looking at three fifty-nine, three sixty, something like that. And most are, if not all, of the, the variance is in tuition students. So at, at this point, if nothing changes, we, we have a significant revenue deficit, which is not, not what we obviously would prefer as we go into the budget planning season, but a revenue deficit is exactly the same as an expenditure deficit in that it's, it has an impact on the tax rate and we have to make it up. We have to, we have to put a, you know, a reserve in the appropriation to, to balance that. So we'll keep an eye on that and I will keep you posted when develops. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we recognize that this is part of the national trend and certainly Vermont's kind of declining enrollment. You can't really expect to maintain your tuition students if the numbers are all going down out there. You can, you can claim a greater share of the population out there, but it's, that's all, that's, that's a stretch. So in fact, you know, we're, we're realizing what's happening. If there aren't so many students in Dover or there aren't so many students in Wordsboro, Wordsboro is down ten kids this year, from seventy-two to sixty-two, sixty-one. Well, you know, this is, this, this is coming our way at Leland and Gray. Well, we've known it and, and we do, we, we do talk with principals in the tuition towns and our, our numbers are based on the current sixth graders that are in those schools in November, December, January, when we're doing our planning. So this, this is not based on just a historical average, it's, it's.
on just a historical average. It's, it's based on who, which sixth graders were in Wordsboro, Dover, Marlborough, Stratton, you know, we, we contact the principal, we ask for input. What do you think the family's thinking? They give us a number. We budget that. That number has historically been pretty accurate. This year, it's off significantly.
And we have no feedback on what the reason is.
Yeah, actually, we're, we have, like Stephen mentioned, in Wordsboro, I think there's three families that moved out unexpectedly. That's one of our largest losses.
So when you, so, so what you're saying is then it's just people moving out, not people choosing to, I mean, there's some schools that are, we all know what happened over in Dover.
Yeah.
Are we losing to Burden Burden? Are we losing to?
I don't know the answer to that, yeah. Dover is another, another town. We expected eight and we have four.
Yeah, that's a, that's a Burden Burden phenomenon there. They're running a bus over there in some way.
And we used to have twenty-seven.
Actually providing transportation in Dover now for Burden Burden.
Yeah, Burden Burden. But Wordsboro isn't in that situation. I don't have any indication there on that one. And of course, we're, as we said before, we're getting students from Athens for whom we don't.
And you don't get any money for them.
We get it, we get the tuition seventh eighth graders.
Well, these fifteen are not seventh and eighth graders.
No, I, I, I'm sure the board understands that, but when she said that we don't get any money for students from those two towns, I want to make sure we recognize seventh, eighth grader do.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That's so brilliant.
There, yeah, and I was, I wrote down your national trend line. I mean, what, what are the trends? We have to make sure that we're planning accordingly.
But also to listen to what Bruce and Megan were sharing with us in our music program advocates, you know, how important it is to, to be in the elementary schools, to, to get kids excited about the transition to Leland and Gray and they, you know, to share that success, it's, that's just terrific success and it is, you know, there is a lot of opportunity to change, change the direction. I think we've got some very passionate people that are doing that, so. And then we know also that the Journey East program is being extended into a student foreign exchange program and I believe we have two, two foreign exchange students for the first time where we are charging tuition. And that is as a result of going through a certification program with, with the government, the federal government, so that we are a certified institution and able to charge, charge a tuition as Burden Burton is and as Linden Institute and other independent schools. We're probably one of the few public schools that are, that are doing this and we hope that that grows.
Yeah, the first estate.
So the financial report, I'll keep it very brief. This, this is not the usual format that, that I will be providing you. I did give you this as, just as a sample and maybe a progress report, reported before and Stephen has shared with all the boards that we've gone to a new financial system that integrates human resource, contract management with payroll and accounts payable, also the general ledger, financial reporting, capital asset accounting and cash management. So it's a much more comprehensive system than what we were using. We, we have gone to this more robust system primarily because of the growing demands of, of the Department of Education and the Federal Department of Education for accountability of public, public funds and the changes in the industry, the governmental accounting standard board's requirements for, for reporting. So I just wanted to spend a moment on the major shift here and you see this very long string of numbers on the first column. Just, just very quickly, this is what's driving so much of the data collection that we are required to do. This is not optional generally. So we, we have created a chart of accounts that is in compliance basically with what the Commissioner of Education expects all public schools to report and then it does become the basis of, of our funding. So the accuracy of, of the reporting is crucial. So just quickly, what you're looking at is a chart, an account structure that defines the fund. Fund is, Fund One is our general fund, which is a taxpayer-funded group of activity. The next set of digits is the program. Program is direct instruction or food services or you'll see later on in this chart, a nine hundred is after-school programs. So there are a variety of programs. The next set of digits are the functions. So those are the ones you're probably most familiar with. Functions would be the music program, the art program, the science program, social studies, and then there's, there's support services, administration board, building and so on. Those are the functional groups that are all having a unique identity. The next string is object. The three-digit codes are, are things we buy, salaries, benefits, professional services, equipment and so on. We are now capturing level, grade level throughout the supervisory union. This is a very, it will be the first time we're able to differentiate spending in accounting systems by, by grade level, whether it's preschool, K through six, or seven through twelve. And then the, the set of digits that are all zeros at the end, those are project numbers. In the general fund, everything gets crushed into one number, as you know, and that's the number that we either offset against the tax rate at the end of the year because it's a surplus, or it's the number that we have to add to the budget appropriation because it's a deficit. And so, for example, if nothing changes with the revenue forecast, you know, we're looking at a hundred thousand plus addition. And but, but in our other programs, we have our special revenue fund, we have a trust fund, we have a capital fund, we have a student activity fund. They all have project numbers and so they wouldn't be all a bunch of zeros there. They would all have a unique number because Tom Condon wants to know what his Journey East program is and Ann wants to know what her theater program is and all of those are tracked by a project number.
Twenty-first century would be another example.
Twenty-first century and so on. So this is, this is just a little bit of the, sort of the detail. You, you actually do see this in the annual report, the budget. I think that there's more interest in, in moving towards summary level information in, in budget presentation formats so that people can absorb this information in a, in a more analytical way, which is things like, you know, what are we spending on direct instruction? How much are we spending on administration? What are we spending on capital and so on? When you're presented with information as traditionally we have in our annual reports, you know, you're giving people a lot of detail, but it's hard for them to do much analysis. And this new structure lends itself to comparative sort of information from school to school and supervisory union to supervisory union. So that's why we're moving forward.
I just want to assure you that Frank has no intention of subjecting you to this amount of detail on a monthly basis.
That's right, yeah.
He just wanted to make sure and I certainly supported his effort to, you know, let you as board members know what the basis for the new accounting system is and the detail and the thought that goes into it so that you can ask the questions and we can come up with the answers in a much more efficient way regarding our investments and allocation of resources.
And it's pretty easy to follow when I'm, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm looking at, it's pretty easy to follow the functions and they're not exactly the same, but they're pretty darn close.
They are.
So it's easy to take it right, take you right to the annual report and what we've published.
The intent, this is, this is, I'm showing you the evolution of the transition and this is just where we are. I wouldn't show you this if I was through this phase, but we, we've just finished the payroll transition, which is obviously critical. Folks expect to get paid. They did get paid on, on August thirty-first under the new system. This is my first crack at the financial statement reporting, but what will come is a, a statement that rolls up, much like you were accustomed to seeing a one-page document that provides the key summary level expenditure item. And then we will have a balance sheet, but I, I need to go through the audit, which is scheduled for later this month, close those balances in the old system and then transfer them into the new system and then I can start giving you the usual balance sheet, you know, assets, liabilities and fund balance and then a one-page revenue and expense report.
So because it's so broken out and could, can you say, I'm just looking through for things that jump out at me, like all the different departments and textbooks as a line item. Could you say just, can you have it reorganized and just be textbooks as a line item for all different?
Sure.
You know, in thinking that we're going to fall short with enrollment and projected budget and looking through at the, let's say thousands and thousands of dollars. And I can obviously see already that if the actual is accurate, that means that school started and no textbooks were bought with the textbook money. So then you can maybe make the logical jump that they didn't need the textbooks for the school year and we can budget for the beginning of next school year, that textbook, or some, that kind of thought process toward, as the year goes on, looking at what's been spent and not spent?
Sure, yeah, and the, the information will be readily available for that sort of analysis. Just that particular example, where there actually has been many textbooks purchased, but, but we had to do it under the, the legacy system. So those transactions, as I was saying, but I wasn't specific, all of those transactions won't come into this system until the auditors come in and say, okay, we agree with the financial report. Then, then we'll transfer. So there's probably ten thousand dollars worth of textbooks in the, in the former accounting system. When we bring it in, you'll see this and it will be what you would expect. So I, in fact, I think Durin and I have met about making sure that, that we do accommodate those additional numbers that she was referring to in algebra that weren't anticipated. So we'll actually exceed our textbook budget this year, but we'll, we'll make sure we conserve in a supply budget.
Yeah, as a teacher, I lived through a budget freeze to deal with budget shortfall and, but then also as a teacher, I've heard teachers talk about, oh, I still got five hundred dollars in my budget left. I'm going to buy a bunch of stuff, which would be used in the next school year. So I know that there's wiggle there sometimes in some budgets and that would be a place to try to make up some of that shortfall if we can, or maybe it is, or maybe that's, I don't know, but something we've done that in the past.
Yeah, that's really the fiscal control responsibility of the principal and CFO, you know, in terms of approval of the purchase process.
What's been very good at Leland and Gray is that the teachers have embraced this, this sense of accountability. As you've seen, our budget document is thirty pages and it's thirty pages because it's a line item plan. And so with our electronic requisition system, the teacher basically recognizes what was approved by Durin in the plan. They, they select those account numbers. It's integrated into the system that says, oh, here's the plan for four thousand dollars of textbooks. They, they process their requests and it updates the general ledger so that there's continuity, there's control, there's, there's, you know, a result that, that we expect. Fortunately, the Leland and Gray teachers have, have been very willing to, to use the system. We're looking to roll this out into the elementary schools as well because they're still using manual processes. They write out a requisition and then call in an order and that's, yeah. So we're excited, but it's just a tremendous, it's been a tremendous amount of work. So I know this is more for the, for Stephen and Durin and I'm sure they've done this, that any opportunity you have to, to compliment the staff in, in the buildings about supporting the process. And it's primarily Carolyn Genes at Leland and Gray, who's just doing a tremendous amount of learning, using two systems and under a great deal of time pressure to, to make this transition.
Well, I hope you'll thank her and all those for us as well.
We do. I have, yeah, yeah. Because this is, this is about three hundred accounts that you're looking at and that's the Fund One and we have, as I mentioned, the Fund Five, Seven, Nine and Fund Eight. And then we, at this supervisory union, the chart of accounts is about twice as big as this. And then we have ten other schools that we're doing these charts. So it's, it's been quite a run and we're about halfway there.
Wow. Well, thanks.
Okay.
Anybody have questions or comment?
I just want to say that I'm concerned because we have really strong enrollments in our courses this year. When I first came to Leland and Gray, I was asked by our administrator and some teachers, what about kids with early release and late arrival? And I would say, what's that? Well, kids who are here for half a day. And I said, that's wrong. We shouldn't have any students like that and we don't. And while there are a number of students who have a free block, you know, for a semester or a period for the year or something, who are juniors and seniors, the course enrollment is really strong and, I mean, Tom Chen has seventy-one students. And I, it's just double from a couple of years ago. And the same thing is going to happen as those kids move up into French Three and Four. And I think they've never had so many students before. And so when I hear about the shortfall in the budget and I know what the implications are, maybe they shouldn't be saying this so publicly, but I'm like, well, what happens when all the students are in Algebra Two, which is two years from now? Right now, we have twenty-five percent, thirty percent of our students get into Algebra Two. So just want to throw that out there.
Well, we have to, we have to reallocate our resources or increase the resources and, you know, that's, that's the challenge the board faces in collaboration with the administrative team to figure out what the possible solutions or choices are. Everybody wants their cake and eat it too, but.
There's just so much cake to go around.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, there could be worse dilemmas.
I mean, it is the good news, bad news, you know? I mean, after all, that's what our goal is, to better educate our children, but.
Right. And I'm very excited to hear those numbers.
There are, there are costs and it's a certain part of the issue regarding what's happening with enrollment in, in art or in music and so forth. I mean, in other, other disciplines. I mean, if seventy-one kids are taking Chinese and, you know, five years ago was twenty. This is a significant difference.
Well, I also don't want to belabor this too long, but I want to just say that last year, there were some people who, I know Durin was not one of them, but there were some people who were quite upset with a governor making a statement that, like he did with the Commissioner of Education about the, the Algebra One and Geometry in ninth and tenth grades. And however you feel about that, and certainly Durin supported it and was pleased to hear because you made a public statement about that because we're doing that here already now. And that's a, but that is a significant message coming from the state level as well, you know, that we need to be strengthening our math and science. And we've been hearing that right up from the top level in the state of Vermont, so.
And as Stephen knows, in the Common Core State Standards, which should take effect in two years, it's Algebra in eighth grade and Geometry in ninth grade. So it'd be accelerating all students.
Yeah, that's really the, the, the challenge of how is that all students will be receiving and be, have, have, have achieved the standards in numeracy and fractions and algebra and decimals. So that's why, and I'm very pleased to say that the teachers are very enthusiastic about this course and these courses and we, we have good enrollment and when we get the new contract ratified, we'll be able to ensure that we'll be able to provide the professional development to get the job done.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Frank?
Yeah, just add my commendation to Frank, but also all the people in my office. This summer was a tremendous collaboration of, you can imagine the stress of on the system of a very small work group. of a very small work group, and there was a lot of coverage for each other, there was a lot of cooperative support, and I just commend all of them individually, collectively, for pulling this off, because it always turns out to be a much more difficult task than you imagine when you sign the contract.
Well, you took the words out of my mouth in much more detail, but I just was going to extend our thanks to Frank and his staff, including Carolyn as well. I know it's been huge. Okay, if there's nothing else, we can whip right through the rest of this agenda, I think, pretty quickly. The Regional Education District is the only thing we haven't done under old business. I don't even, have we had a meeting since we met last? I can't remember. Actually, I think we...
We haven't been this important since the...
Since the...
Well, that was the WC's.
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember whether we had the Regional Education District. Well, we're off for a month, it gets me all mixed up, but I guess everyone's aware that Wyndham has made the decision to not continue, is that correct?
Withdrawal.
Well, we're aware that, withdrawal in studies. And Dionne and I and Stephen were, attended a meeting up there last night, and it sounds pretty, you know, strong in Wyndham, that they're staying with that. So I, the, there's a date at the end of your agenda, which is incorrect, the Regional Education District Study Committee is meeting again, and I, you know, encourage anyone who wants to to come. It's actually not on the 10th, it's on October 3rd. That's the first Wednesday of October.
I think I already edited everybody's, make sure you noted, if you had a previous print that said the 10th, it is going to be on the 3rd, and the meeting is here.
And so the discussion will be around what our next steps will be. There's several different options that we can discuss, and I don't really want to belabor them unless you guys are interested in hearing about it here.
Anyway, the four remaining towns appear to be committed to trying to pursue a K-12 district, so we'll see how they can do it.
And honestly, I know there's three of us who are sitting on, is it three or four of us, who are sitting on the Regional Education Study Committee from, who are also representing Leland and Gray, not on the committee, but who are on the board. And our perspective is huge, because we already operate under a similar type system, but I would encourage the rest of you to come too. And even though Wyndham has chosen to not continue their participation, I've encouraged them to come, and I'm hoping that they will continue to participate, so that they are aware of what's happening, because it really has an impact on Wyndham as well, because Wyndham's part of Leland and Gray. And Leland and Gray may or may not continue in its existence if something moves forward. So please come to the meeting if you can. You know, I hope you will. Does anybody have any questions about that? Go ahead, first.
I know that Jamaica has not met since any of this happened, so there will be a meeting on, is it the 21st?
18. 18? I'll look it up again, I just emailed, it's a Tuesday.
And I, I think that's an important meeting, at least for the Jamaica folks, because I'm not sure where that's going.
Yes, it's the 18th for Jamaica.
And then they...
So you're planning on being at that meeting, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Feel free to go, Patty.
That's the 18th of September?
Yes. Yeah.
I have a question. The one thing that really took me back when the Wyndham decided not to participate in everything was the knowledge that even if they're not participating, they could have participation on the board and have a vote. So I think it's important everybody understand that that was one of the things at that time, that even though they aren't participating in the RED, they could have...
They will still have a vote on the red board under the current modified RED or MUD.
Modified Unified Union.
Modified Unified Union District.
Union School District, yeah.
So it's short, MUD for short. But honestly...
Size pretty much.
It is a little blimby, it is fairly appropriate. But, and there's been a lot of questions about it, and there's been a lot of suggestion that there will need to be some technical modifications to that law, Act 156, so we'll see. Is it 156?
Yeah, 156. 156 did a...
153, 156.
Is that a provision provided? I am sorry, at state level, that particular, how do these things like that...
That, when 153 came out, that was the REDs, and it didn't address many issues that people wanted, and it wasn't flexible enough for many school districts. So they, they added some more flexibility to it through a new law this year, Act 156. And what that allowed was modified unified school districts, so it's a modified RED.
Which meant that?
Which meant that.
Right, that you didn't have to, well, there's many things that it meant, you've got to look at the law, and it's very confusing, but what it did mean was you didn't have to, all members of the union school district didn't necessarily have to participate to continue forward, such as Wyndham pulling out, we could still continue forward, as long as it met other criteria as well. But unfortunately, it appears that some of the language is just not going to hold up, and so it may need some technical amendments to 156 to actually make us able to move forward under a modified RED. So we'll find out a lot more about that, and if you want to come to that meeting, please do, because John Everett's going to be bringing us more information about that at the meeting. There's also other options that are on the table for us, and one would be foregoing something that we have not wanted to do all along, and I know we at Leland and Gray don't want to do it, but that's foregoing the K-12 and doing the K-6 RED. So that would include the four elementary schools, not including Wyndham, and they would form a modified union, it would be K-6. That's allowed now as well, that's another piece of flexibility in there. And then Leland and Gray would still stay in place, as it is today, and Wyndham would just continue with their school, and they would still have a vote on the board of Leland and Gray, but they wouldn't be on that K-6 board. If it's a K-12, then they would be on, that's what we're talking about, Patty. If it's a K-12, they've got, we've got to figure out how that works. Now, does one vote from Wyndham make much difference on the K-12 board? I don't know, but if it was Newfane with four votes, and they weren't in, that would probably make a difference. So, you see what I'm saying? It can be, you know, it's got to be worked out. So please come to the October 3rd meeting if you want to have these questions answered. Honestly, it has a big impact on us at Leland and Gray, so I would really encourage all of you to come. And we will be probably making a decision at that meeting whether we're going to just halt, move forward. I think it's been talked about at all levels, at each elementary, except Jamaica.
Well, Jamaica's not at a quorum, and...
But I know Newbrook did, and they want to continue on with the K-12.
I know Newbrook did discuss Leland and Gray, like they want to continue on, and I think that's town's position, although I wasn't at the board meeting last night, Frank was attending for me. But I know that was their position earlier. So I think it really will be interesting, and based on the advice we get as to what the best path is, at least available, or how patient we want to be. I mean, some people are pretty cynical about waiting for the legislature to change the rules so we can make something work, but, you know, that may be the tough choice that the members of the committee face. The next step is for the committee to move forward with the articles to the state board. And I think that that would probably, I would advocate that we take some initiative that way, and therefore precipitate or cause the legislature or the state board to make a decision that would clarify the issue. Because the, you know, the challenge is, why does a member from Wyndham on this new red board, K-12 board, have a vote regarding the elementary school kids that they've already pulled their school out of? That's the conflict that people see that is kind of hard to swallow.
That's one kind of issue.
And, you know, that, I think that can be arranged through bylaws and, you know, voting on certain measures, but it's still not as clear as people like. And when you go to the public to have the public approve these articles, you have to be clear about these things.
I know what you're talking about. I think that was evident at the...
We had a big list, we had a big list from that meeting last night of all the people that had questions or wanted more clarification or raised issues that really weren't.
Well, some of the questions, to be fair, were not even on the table at this point.
That's right.
I mean, that was, that made it a little more confusing, because there were a lot of questions that people wanted to have answered about building a new elementary school when the RED really hadn't even had that.
Right, where is the building going to be on a floodplain or not?
Yeah.
But that is something I know you guys have mentioned to us about, about the RED.
Right, but we didn't go any farther than what Ancha had presented at the meeting last night, which was just hypothetical. If the RED decided they wanted to move forward with that, then all those questions would have to be looked at and answered then. We were not, we hadn't even looked at it to that level at all on the RED committee. We were just looking at, do we want a formal RED? And this building, this school was secondary to that, although it was critical to it.
That's right, that was my understanding, it was critical for some of the towns.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And also appreciate that, there are very limited resources in my office. We can't be chasing a lot of hypotheticals, figuring out all the money and so forth when we're changing our accounting system. I mean, it's just, you know, there's just only so much you can, you can claim to do. And the public may be crying for all these details, but in fact, you know, our, we don't have the resources to provide.
I mean, it was, I felt, you know, somewhat sorry for what Wyndham had to go through last night, because they were taken to task for something that I don't think was really quite fair by the community members. And honestly, the RED, we at the RED committee, and maybe this wasn't expressed well enough at the meeting last night, but we on the RED committee had never, had, we weren't at the stage to take it to a public engagement process. And what the board up there was sort of taken to task for was that why weren't we told the details? Well, the details weren't there yet, because we hadn't even made a decision on the RED committee to actually move forward. We had the draft articles, because we needed to look at something, you know, but we hadn't even decided whether we were going to present those. And the meeting where Wyndham came to the RED committee and said, we're going to pull out, was the meeting where we were getting feedback from the five, the five towns, and then Leland and Gray, they wanted to have input, but the five towns on, yes, here's what, we like this and we want to move forward. And that was the meeting where it, Wyndham pulled out. So we'd never reached the process of public engagement, and I know that the timeline was tough, and we were questioning on the RED committee whether we were going to be able to meet that timeline anyway. But, you know, we realized it was potentially possible, and there were, there was a lot of pressure on, from some people who wanted to do it early enough. You know, there were a lot of reasons for it. So we could have, we had already discussed if we needed to move it back, we could do a town meeting, we had discussed maybe May, so we had other alternatives, but again, we were at that stage where we were ready to go, so...
All the tedious work has been done, and actually, that was a very interesting meeting to get a roundup of everything that the committee had done, which was a ton.
Yeah.
Yeah, Anja had a 10-page document.
She did a great job summarizing it for Wyndham.
By month, by month, what the committee had accomplished, which was really quite impressive.
Yeah, there were some great questions asked, and great clarifying...
Yeah, at the meeting where our board...
Right, right, but now it's just fun. Join the fun.
Well, we'll, again, October 3rd.
Well, this next meeting will be critical about what the, what the work will say next.
Come and share your feedback. I hope you will do that.
October 3rd.
October 3rd.
Okay, because it says 10th.
I know.
I know.
I know, we were busy doing something else when I was correcting it.
You, the copies I passed out tonight, I hand-wrote the correction, but...
It's October 3rd, 7 o'clock, right here. Okay.
Get it printed at home, you have the wrong date.
If there's nothing else on the RED?
We're prepared.
We have a brief discussion. I, you all, honestly, Leland and Gray's been wonderful, even though I've only gotten three responses from Leland and Gray board members, that's much more than I've had from responses from any other Wyndham Central Board members, on my email about the joints, a possible proposed joint study between Wyndham Central and Wyndham Southwest Supervisor Union. I hope you all saw that email that went to all of you, and I know some of you did, because I got responses back. It went to your Wyndham Central email address.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you actually do have that. It hasn't gone away.
So proud of you. I got a new phone, and I can remember how to get in.
Like, it's there, so if you are, if you're not using your Wyndham Central email, you're going to miss everything.
How do you remember my username?
If you're not using it, Mike...
Your username is WyndhamCentralBoard.org.
If you're not using it, you need to get that straightened out, because everything's going to that only for Wyndham Central email. So, and there's ways around dealing with it, if you call central office, if you lost, you call them and get it straightened out, you need that stuff.
Call us, call us. Get something to work for you, okay?
And so for those of you who responded, thank you, and if you haven't, because you know who's coming, we need a quorum for that meeting, and I don't know what, do we want to...
It is the 26th, and it's at Dover, on the 7 p.m.
And it's a letter that, if anybody was at the retreat, you'll know, Patty, I know you were there, and a few others were there, a letter that came to us from the Wyndham Southwest Supervisor Union's board chair on behalf of their board, asking for us to look at exploring some shared services or whatever. We'll find out on the 26th what they're, what they have in mind. And in that email, attached to it is that letter, so if you're interested, read it. The letter that came from the chair of their board.
Agenda will come out shortly.
Oh, and there's a facilitator.
And a facilitator will be Stephen Dale.
Stephen Dale, Steve Dale's coming.
And then I know that he's collaborating and consulting with Seth Lloyd, who's the chair of that union board, Supervisory Union Board, and Emily, and, yeah, the superintendent there and myself, so...
Yeah, so...
We want to make sure that that is a...
These are ongoing...
...significant consideration, and that you have an idea about what will be involved before you attend the meeting.
This, I tried to...
Great opportunity.
What I said in the email, and I meant it, there may be some decisions that are made at this meeting to enter a study, and it's really important to get feedback from everybody, so Leland and Gray is big in this. So we should, because honestly, this, they have a high school over there too, so if we're doing joint, you know, we want to know what's up. So please come to this meeting if you can. It's in Dover, and the reason it's in Dover is to accommodate the two supervisor unions.
And it's a result of them being at a place right now where they don't have a superintendent chair.
That's right.
So they're looking at, okay, before we stick with one format, let's look what's out there.
Right.
They have asked Nancy Talbert, who was the assistant to be in...
But, yeah, there's superintendent left, and so this is an opportunity, I think, for them. And that, honestly, the conversations I've had with Seth are very positive, they're looking at this as an opportunity, and why not look? So that's what this is about, so please come. Okay, is there anything else about that? If not, we can move on to the, oh, bills and payrolls, wow. Okay, so now we have two different numbers. We've got warrants, because I guess this is where it's switched over?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have warrants, and it was much easier before, it was 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, right up through to 96, and then the general fund and then warrants. I'm just going to read them from the, want me to read them all?
Just give the total. You give the total, right.
Okay, if anybody wants to see the numbers of the warrants, it's just going to take me way too long to read them, because they've got eight digits each, so I'm just going to, does anybody want me to read the eight digits? And they will mean nothing to you. Okay. So if you want to read, there are three people who have reviewed, or two people have reviewed this, and so I'm just going to count, um, here's a number of general fund warrants. Totalling $619,658.36, and then we have payrolls, and I'm not, I'm also not going to read all of those, but there are eight of them, totaling $324,923.00. Total warrants and payroll, $944,580.66. And the payrolls dates are from 7/13/2012 to 8/31/2012. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Comments, questions? I know there were some back and forth with Frank. Everybody?
All set.
All set? Okay. All those in favor of, we're moving the votes, will you please say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Prohibitions? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Consent agenda, we can just do that, did we, oh, yeah.
Minutes went out on Sunday, a little late, but, okay.
So by consensus, we'll approve the consent agenda. Okay, no objections. Executive session.
I don't think it's going to be needed. I will say publicly, we believe we're very close to having the final document for ratification vote on the CBA, but we don't quite have it yet, so...
Which means another month, because we don't need...
Well, that's true, yes. And of course, it does delay our adjustment of the payroll and so forth, which, you know, will give Frank's department and division another opportunity to learn the whole process again. whole process again. But, you know, we may make a...
We tried to get this done on August.
We may make a positive out of that too, I don't know, but at least they'll get a chance to repeat their skills.
It's not, it doesn't do it to...
No, it's not, there's no, no indication of difficulty except for illness, and making sure that we're very careful about having everything correct.
Okay, so no executive session?
Oh, also, there is a, we have two agreements, one is with the par, the support standard, the par professionals.
Oh, yeah.
And that one also is tentatively agreed to, but it won't be ratified until the teacher, it's contingent upon the teacher collective bargaining agreement being, being ratified. Two-step process.
Okay, so we'll be doing them both at the same time, problem?
That's the good news.
Okay, so you read on your agenda the next meetings, please come to them all if you can. The VSBA Wyndham Regional Meeting, I hope you guys will sign up for that, you have to go to the VSBA website to sign up for that, but that is here, and it's a pretty important thing if you can make it. It is a dinner provided, that's the third item on there, VSBA Wyndham Regional Meeting, it's where you elect your Wyndham region officers, and it's a, there's a good presentation that night. Play the truth, I can't remember what it is, but go on, go online. But it's been developing, but you'll see it online when you go online to sign up for it. And you just need to fill out the form at the VSBA website.
And the election of your...
Please come.
Election of your officers for representation at the state level.
Right, and one of them's a Wyndham, one of them's a Wyndham Central Board member, so Rich Warner, he's, this is, he's running for his second year on the VSBA board. And then there's a gentleman from Brattleburg who's interested in running, so, because we have two, two, a president and a vice president. So please come to that meeting if you can. Like I said, there's a little meal.
And what time does it start?
It starts at 5:00 with the meal, and then 5:30 or so with, I think, this is part of the meeting. And then there's a presentation. Okay, anything else? If not, we just need a motion.
Who took her?
Okay.
Way to wake up there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jay, second.
Someone's going to go.
We're out. It's always taken so long, that, that motion's... I think I catch him off guard or something.